Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members, pleasure to be here with you this evening. And just a reminder, my name is Tim Matthews with Georgia Department of Transportation. I work in now the State Express Lanes Office or Express Lanes Office we created back in August to manage all the express lane projects that are in this program. Formerly in the Innovative Delivery Office as the MMIP Program Manager, now in the Administrator for the Express Lanes Office for Georgia DOT. So a little bit of an organizational change at the department. As we recognize that these, these projects are big, complicated, challenging projects. We wanted to focus on those individually and the delivery model, which I'll talk to you about here in just a few minutes. Just a little bit of a disclaimer, what am I give you an update on is really what we were pursuing before from a procurement strategy to what we're looking at right now. There's a lot of decisions that have to be made still to make sure we understand what these projects need to be delivered, what the industry is looking for when it comes to these type big mega projects. And so we don't want to make any rushed decisions to have, to only later have to back up. So that's why I'm not going to be able to tell you, here's the date that these projects are going to be delivered. Here's exactly how they're going to be delivered, et cetera. But it will be a high overview on why we're making these changes and really where we're headed down the road, subject to final decisions from leadership. I'm going to try to move this down here. Okay, here we go. Let's use the mouse. All right, so I'll talk about I-285 Advanced Improvement Project because there's a few projects that we are advancing and show you where the status of those are. Talk about the 400 Express Lane Project. I know it does not, is not here in Dunwoody necessarily, but there's a big connection to State Route 400 as it relates to 285 and the BRT and transit message there. And then give you an update on I-25 Express Lanes and really the procurement strategy that we've gone and shifted to and moving forward. And then talk about express lanes transit with mayor. You certainly know what's going on there with regards to the effort with the top end mayors. And let me know if I don't have it on the screen appropriately. So I-285 Peachtree Industrial Boulevard Interchange Improvements. Everyone knows that's a congested interchange, particularly the movement coming westbound to north on PIB. This project is combines I-285 westbound exit ramps to Peachtree Industrial Boulevard North and South while adjusting the horizontal curve, which is pretty tight in there of the north exit ramp to reduce bottleneck on 285. The DB team is preparing to submit final bridge plans. Doreville is repaving part of PIB soon and GDOT is coordinating with them. Colonial Pipeline Relocation is forthcoming. Construction is slated to start in 2022 with a substantial completion in 2023. It's not a large project, so it'll go pretty quick, subject to traffic management and so on. So that's the project. I believe it's been awarded to a contractor, so they should be getting started relatively soon. So that's the update on that project. I-25 East Side Bridge Replacement, several, three bridges in particular being replaced as a, as a result of the express things moving in the future. Replaces Covenant Highway over 285, Red Wing Circle over 285 and Glenwood Road. That project is slated to start construction in 2022 and substantial completion in 2023. That project is awarded and I believe the contractors mobilizing as we speak. The I-25 westbound auxiliary lane extension, that's the extension of the auxiliary lanes that are being built by the Transform Interchange 285 400 interchange project. That project, construction starting 2023, substantial completion in 2025. A little bit behind the other projects, but is moving forward as an advanced improvement project. The environmental document anticipated to be approved in Q1 of 2022, which sets the stage for that project to move forward. And that'll be an extension of where the, the current project is being built ends and somewhere past Roswell Road and then take you all the way to Riverside Drive on 285. There are 400 express lanes. Unfortunately, we were not able to award the project in the previous procurement back in August. And I won't go into all the reasons why. The most important message here is that the project's not canceled. It is a priority for the state and it is a needed project and will move forward in some capacity and into the future. I can't tell you when that's going to be. I will say it is a priority and it will probably go first before 285 because it's ready to go. Environmental document's been approved on that project and, and we just got to decide how we want to procure, reprocure that. So we can hopefully get the industry to react and bring forward a plan to build that project moving forward. So message is there is it is not canceled. We'll soon let everyone know, probably in the first quarter of 2022, what the plan is on how to procure it and the timing for, for what that's going to look like. The State Route 400 Design Phase One Design Build Project. We had an infra grant on that State Route 400 Express Lane Project to the tune of 184 million that had to meet certain milestone requirements from a construction perspective. And if we didn't meet that, we lose the money. So what we did is broke State Route 400 into two phases. Phase one being a series of bridge replacements that have to happen as a, as a result of the express lanes. And that project is going to move forward and it started procurement already. Therefore, we meeting the requirements in the infra grant moving forward, so we don't lose that money. So that project construction will start in 2023, which is that milestone that I talked about with substantial completion in 2024 on that State Route 400 corridor. So phase one, three bridges, phase two is the rest of the express lanes on 400. So I-285 Express Lanes. Our previous procurement approach was a design, build, finance, maintain strategy, which basically brings a private developer in to, to finance the project and ma, and build the project and ultimately maintain the project for a 30, 35 year period. And we, Georgia DOT and the state, we're going to be responsible for paying that project off over that 35 year period. Similar, similar to a mortgage payment that you'd have when you buy a house. With that type of strategy, we were only able to afford so much. And what you see on the screen here is I-285 top end giving you two lanes in each direction barrier separated from just past 75 to just past 85. But on the east and west side of 285, we can only afford one lane in each direction buffer separated on, on that corridor. And I mean truly buffer, no pylons, nothing, just like you see on 85. So looking at what was needed and what other options are out there to help us get what we needed on these projects. We started looking at procurement strategies, engaging the industry to find out what other ways to procure this project to get everything we wanted and needed on 285. Ultimately, after about a year long effort behind the scenes, all the while moving these projects forward. With this environmental document was at DC for legal sufficiency, the EIS document. So we're well on our way to get the top end done. We found that there is a way to get what we need and on the 285 corridor. And that is using a new P3 approach called a revenue risk model. And basically it's a P3, just like the other model, only the developer is going to come in, bring the financing for the project, pay for the project, operate and maintain the project and build the project for a 50 year period. That, that can change probably around the 50 could be a little bit longer, probably not less than that. The goal here is we get two lanes in each direction all the way around. And also try to reduce as much public subsidy as possible. We don't know what, what we need to bring to the table when it comes to money. But the idea here is to use this model to have the private sector build and pay themselves back by collecting the revenue. That's really how that works. That gives us the ability to reduce our public subsidy piece and also get more value, such as the additional lane on 285, approximately 21%, more capacity in that regard. Also potentially new access points that we couldn't afford either. I mean, you look at PIB, we couldn't afford an access point there. The developer may want an access point to the express lanes at that location because it gives them the ability to generate new additional revenue. Stone Mountain Freeway over in, on the east side, it was too expensive, right? So, and we were also contemplating taking out some access points at the Transform Interchange Project because they were too expensive and we were over our budget. So this is going to give us the ability to get more value and that value could be any things I just talked about there, including little to no public subsidy for the state. Where are we at with this, this change? While we're refining the concept, top end is not going to change that much. It was already two lanes in each direction barrier separated. We do have to adjust the endpoints because they were originally tying into one lane in each direction. So we have to adjust that. So the environmental document has to be retooled a little bit, but not have to go back to the drawing board in that, in that case. So it'll help us keep priority on that project and move forward as quickly as possible. The east and west side is add an additional lane with a barrier separation. So that's going to add a lot more, you know, scope out there. And we have to open that environmental document back up and elevate that from an EA to an EIS, which will take some time. So those projects will probably get shifted out a little bit. We don't know when yet, but the idea is, you know, adding more scope and impact, then you're going to have to do more work environmentally. So that's where we're at with that. As I mentioned earlier, we're behind the scenes strategizing on what the best procurement timeline is for these projects. These projects are into the tune of $2 to $5 billion, any given one of these. And you can't just put these out on the street and, and everybody come bid on them. There's only certain players that can bid on these projects and they can only bid it on a certain amount at any given time. So we've got to make sure we package these in the right way so that the market can react. Ultimately, we need these projects built and we need these, this industry to build it for us. So we've got to put the right packages out there and make the right decisions now. Take a little bit of time and not put something out and have to back up later. Cause that's not, not good for the state's credibility. It's not good for the department and certainly not good for the industry. So that's what we're doing behind the scenes as it relates to that. We're doing a lot of market outreach to help make these decisions. Talk about express lane transit. That term was really dubbed by our Commissioner Russell McMurray, recognizing that you really, it's hard to expand transit in the region, especially heavy rail transit because of the cost. But what can you do beyond that is use your express lanes as the backbone for transit, for transit expansion or, or enhancement. So that's really where that term comes from here. This, this is a slide is animated, so I can show you what that looks like. But at the end of the day, the ability for express lane train or transit service providers to expand their service on corridors that they can't or won't expand today because it's too congested. The ability to add new routes that they weren't going to go on before. There's not a lot of routes on 285 because it's not reliable and transit service needs to be reliable in that regard. So what we found in our express lane projects is we can get reliable trip times for transit service providers. And that, that ability combined with us building the express lanes and the, the transit service providers and in addition to MARTA, bringing additional services and/or facilities for those connections moving forward. So that's really what the vision is for express lane transit and the ability to expand transit service in the region and what that means for us. I talked about reliable trip times. When we opened Northwest Corridor, we saw right away reduced rush hour periods to the tune of over an hour, probably more than that right now. We had a 3%, 3% average increase in express bus boardings. That just shows you that people are getting the reliable trip times and they're willing to take that service because they're getting that reliable trip time. Matter of fact, the express bus had to arrive, had to shift their schedule by about 15 minutes because they were getting there too early. So again, showing the reliable trip times that occur in the express lanes. In addition to express lane reliability, you also are receiving a benefit in the general purpose lanes on that corridor as well. And remember that's a reversible facility inbound in the morning, outbound in the afternoon. These are 285 going to be in each direction. So we believe that benefit's going to be even greater on 285. What does that mean for 400 and why I mentioned that earlier? It does connect 285. Their effort on 400 is still going to move forward with that phase two project to bring the effort, the areas on 400 for the stations to be built in the future. We've got four stations on that corridor, one directly tied into the MARTA station at North Springs, one directly tied into the parking garage facility at Windward. And then you have two center stations, one at the mall there and one at Holken Bridge Road. We're basically leaving an area for them to build out those future stations. What you see on the screen there is a concept that MARTA put together. It may not look exactly like that, but that's the idea. And again, the state gave $100 million bond for us to not preclude those BRT efforts moving forward. And Mayor, as I talked about earlier, you're heavily involved in this. The considerations for rapid transit and that connection from 400 all the way down to 285, wrapping around the top end and eventually all the way around to I-20 on the, on the east and west side with the cabin Cobb County and their vision for transit. And the ability for us to use express lanes as the backbone and for the local transit service providers to add those stations where they think best suited, I think is a win-win for everyone. And I'll, I'll leave this message with you is we believe the express lanes are absolutely needed for transit enhancement and BRT improvements in the corridor. And without express lanes, we're really not going to be able to receive that benefit. So, and that partnership that we've had with the, the local jurisdictions and MARTA and Serta and Greta and everyone has been very critical for us to, to achieve this very important goal. So we appreciate what you guys are doing in that coordination effort. With that, that's all the presentation I have. I certainly opened it up for any questions and hopefully I can answer as much as I can. Some things I obviously will not be able to answer.
Okay, I'll start with John.
Thank you, Tim. First, I want to say thank you for the mass transit part of the conversation. Early on, many years ago, it seems like that wasn't mentioned at all. So thank you for the shift, whatever has happened. Thank you. First real question comes to the bridges when it comes to Robert's Drive and Pitts Road. Oh, I'm looking at the timeline. We have a number of citizens that cross those bridges going over to Roswell Road and other places. Are they going to be going out together? You're going to one lane each one? Are you doing both at the same time? I'm going to have people that are worried about those two going out together. Any ideas?
Yeah, the strategy that we were bringing with the original project as a whole, I believe had those projects staged or phased such that one, they both can't be closed at the same time. And we presented at the PIOH meetings, a series of detour during those closures. In other words, you're going to have to use one of the other bridges when one are closed. So the intent there is not to close, you know, down completely. Although it would be a quicker construction period if we did that. But we recognized after coordinating with the fire and, and police and school services that it probably wasn't the best option because those, those roads are needed for those purposes. So, you know, I don't know all the details, what, what it is, but that's really the idea of what they're trying to do is move that same concept forward without making any changes as far as I know right now. Another office is delivering that.
And I show 2023 is the construction starts. We're still a way off and you're still figuring out all the details. But thank you for making sure that they're both not closed at the same time. Or at least we have a number of constituents that always go through those, one of route, if not one, the other. So if I can, let's talk about the new funding aspect of the, the top end express lanes. I understand that new funding changes your, you mentioned the Peachtree Industrial Access Point. I've mentioned that in the past. I don't understand why it's not there. So thank you for raising that point. What I'm really worried about is changes in the sense of, you mentioned it. Entrances, exits. The latest map that we have publicly available on your website is a number of years old. At what point will we, the citizens, be able to look at a map and really know what you're planning? Cause now with this change, it's a hiccup in the sense of, I don't know what to expect. That means my citizens don't know, don't know what to expect. When are we going to have a set of drawings and maps that we can rely on?
Well, as a part of the process and this shift in the procurement strategy, bringing a private developer onboard earlier to help, because like I said, they're investing their, their money in this to get paid back by the, the revenue from the tolls. That's a different model than what we were pursuing. So what we have to do is look at what we, what is necessary to achieve what we're looking for from a value perspective and allow them to potentially make changes subject to our, our review and authority. Now, again, they may see a reason to add more access for revenue generation. They may see a need to revise access for conflicts or, or getting a, a better value for them. Now, is that a done deal? No, there'll be a process for us to review and understand what that means. Because we also went to the public and we also, you know, are very transparent and, and want to be and need to be such that, you know, changes can be made, but not on a drastic level. So I'll say that, that the notion that, will you see wholesale changes? I don't think so, but the developer is going to need the opportunity to come in and evaluate the project to make sure that they get the maximum value for themselves, but also get us what we're looking for. And as far as value is concerned, that's really what they're charged with do, with doing under the parameters of the contract and the provisions that we're going to set forth and subject to further public, you know, review. We're going to go back out to the public and let them know what's going on. So timeframe for that, we don't even know when we're going to start the procurement on 285 because of this change. Certainly a priority for us, but we have to understand again, what the industry can, can do from a procurement package perspective and ultimately moving those projects in a phased approach to hopefully get those answers that you're talking about.
And then related to that would be a project that's then following, which would be the tear down and rebuild of Shandley Dunwoody Road and possibly under current on Shallowford North Peachtree. So that would be the same thing, that then just be delayed or rebid at some point down the road.
It'll, it'll be a part of the bigger project. Again, those bigger projects are going to be subject to phasing as well because they're just too big. And the developer will determine how the best face that under the purview of the state as far as what we're looking for in those requirements. But we've talked about before that one at Savoy and Cotillion. The only way to have an access point there is to convert those two roads
Right.
to one-way pair. So the notion is to still continue to access as we know it today until they come in and tell us why it needs to change.
Well, thank you for talking about mass transit. That, that's, that's making me happy. I wasn't always happy with this project. So this is a nice change to hear more of that aspect. And, but that being said, I still want to see detailed maps and drawings as to where the entrances, exits and how it's directly going to affect our residents. So thank you.
Joe.
Hey, Tim, thanks for the update. And I know you're doing your job, you're staying in your lane. I've just got to say what I've got to say as well. When I'm reading on the presentation for the rapid transit, which we're talking about bus rapid transit versus, versus the express, it says, does not preclude transit. Now, if the governor's office called you today and said, go look at what they did in Colorado on US 36 between Boulder and Denver. And it was a express lanes project with a multimodal project led by Colorado DOT and the Regional Transportation District. And it was about a 20 mile segment. They built express lanes. They built bus rapid transit. They built toll vehicle access. They replaced several bridges, built a commuter bike way. And they added BRT improvements, installed intelligent system, reporting systems, incident management, and they had the stops as well. So it's a completely integrated project. I, I work in the software delivery field and I implement projects. And you start with the scope, scope, resources and time, right? So you're working on that resources now with money and payment. I'm looking at a scope. And who's the executive sponsor? If the gov, is the governor's office really the executive sponsor? Can the governor's office say today, include in the scope, build BRT, build the stops, incorporate that? And reach out to the procurement strategy and reach out an RFP to the marketplace to see if some other vendors could come in with a 50-year return on ROI to get into a transit system and they could fund it themselves also in that funding model? Have the, are these, are they having these type of conversations? Because I know the mayors are working on the north end of that. It's like a bottom up, but are we getting any kind of top-down vision to help this type of act access?
Well, obviously the work with the mayors on the top end is, is crucial to understand what the need and desire and the vision is for transit, BRT, bus rapid transit, which is what was adopted by the mayors on top end. That helps us understand what we need to put in front of a developer to react to. That's what I'll say to that point. Will they come in and say, you know what? I, I can give you this value by adding, you know, these BRT stations for you, you know, with little to no cost from you, if you want to bring some money to the table. They could say that. They could say, you know what? If you want me to give you two lanes in each direction barrier separated and pay for this without you having to pay anything, I can't do the stations. I can only allow access to, in the future, to these BRT stations built by others. So the answer is, it depends on what, how the industry reacts to what we're asking them to build at a minimum. At a minimum, we need the express lanes. You can't have the BRT without the express lane. So we need to do that. That, and that's going to be a mandate we put in front of developer. You have to allow transit into the lanes for free and you need to allow a not to preclude future connection to a future BRT station. That's, that's a minimum. That's going to be in the contract that they have to adhere to. Anything beyond that is going to, it depends on what value proposition comes out of it. If it's a huge negative value proposition that doesn't get us what we need at a minimum, that's something we have to contemplate and vice versa. If they say, I can give you this high value proposition and give you more, if you want to contribute X amount of dollars, that's a value proposition we have to consider. And to answer your, your, the other part of the question with regards to the governor, obviously if we're under, you know, purview of the governor and the direction all the way down to, you know, to that level. And there's, our commissioner coordinates with them all the time. So we react to whatever vision comes to us and direction comes to us. You know, can that happen? Maybe, I don't know. But we react to whatever direction, you know, is handed down to us. But at a minimum, that they have to allow transit in whatever form for free and the connection has to be there in the future.
Yeah, I think, I think we're failing if we don't incorporate the, the stops and build it at the same time. The not to preclude, it's, it's out of scope. It's, it's value engineering and it doesn't happen. And you know, there's this theory of induced demand. And we know that no highway capacity increasing project in the history of this planet has ever solved traffic. I was here when they built the, the spaghetti junction and whatnot. So on one end of the hand is, is a no build option with transit only and let that happen. And we also know that the more access points are, are worse for the local communities, right? Because it, 285 was supposed to be a bypass from Atlanta, right? And I wish, hey, I wish we had built an outer perimeter 20 years ago. But no access, have access point in I-20, I-20 and 400. That would have been real bypass, right? And I'll add at 85, 75, et cetera, that, that would have been perfect for me. Let those truckers go around and, and not be on 285, please. So I do look forward though, as a driver to, you know, the swerving and the maneuvering. It's, you know, 285 is one of the worst, most dangerous interstates in, in the nation, right? The highest deaths, death rate that we have. So anything we can do to solve that issue to make it safer for the people that are driving is going to be, be great. So just want to make sure that, you know, I, I'm going to be advocating and obviously for being integrated with the managing projects at the BRT Transit is their funding. Now, let, let's ask about this one, the new federal infrastructure bill. Right? If you don't ask, all they can do is say no, right? So are, are we kind of, is, is that in the scope? Is anybody looking at asking for some of those federal funds?
Yes, we are assessing what the, what is, obviously it's a big bill, I think over 2,500 pages or whatever it was. And there's a lot of elements to it, subject to requirements for each of the funding buckets is what I'll call it. So we're currently reviewing what those are, what it means for us, what we can gain from that bill right now. We don't know the answer yet, but that's what we're in the process of review.
Right, okay, perfect. And thank you, Tim. Hey, appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're good. Party.
Tim, thanks for coming out. Appreciate the presentation. You know, a few, couple of comments and a, and a question. You know, my, some things in my life have taken me up 75 north a lot. And I've got to say, I appreciate the new managed lanes up there and I'm helping fund those a little bit. Doing, doing my little part. So to, to bring up something that you've heard before from John, but I want to make it explicit, you know, one thing, you know, you, you've not got now because you're still, you know, you're, as you go into this, you know, kind of reset process. My take is, you know, you haven't, you know, you, you, you're leaving open where these managed lane access points are going to be on, on these projects a little bit. And I just want to make it explicit that having an access point at Shallowford and not an access point at PIB, I think makes no sense to me whatsoever, given the volume of traffic that shows up at the perimeter at PIB. And, you know, what's going to happen if you don't have that managed lane access at PIB is you're going to create a huge amount of cut-through traffic within Dunwoody to get to a managed lane access point at Shallowford. And/or you're going, I think you're going to get a combination of that and fewer people using it because of the inconvenience of getting there from that PIB corridor. So I just, you know, implore you to make sure that that is looked at very carefully, you know, as to, you know, getting managed lane access from PIB, you know, so that the usage gets maximized of the managed lanes and so that it cuts down on the cut-through traffic through Dunwoody. So that, that's my comments. I do have a side question. On the AIP projects, you, you, you know, and this is not in Dunwoody. It's on the east side at Covington Highway. Is that going to get rid of those fast lane merges hopefully that are on the east side? Is that, is that Covington Highway?
I'm not sure.
That Stone Mountain Freeway?
Yes, okay, yeah, that's.
Oh geez. Can't, can't we get that fixed as part of this project? That's, and that's all I've got, sir. Thank you very much for coming out.
Tom.
Yeah, Tim, thanks for the presentation tonight. Jim hit a lot of the points that I was going to try and hammer home too. But I, I add my own little twist to it. The first But I'm, I'm, I had my own little twist to it. The first, um, part I want to talk about is with Peachtree Industrial. I'm going to start with the non-managed lane improvements that, that you guys are planning. It, by the presentation, it looks like they're only in the east, I'm, I'm sorry, in the westbound direction. Why is there nothing planned for the eastbound? Cause that's a, another choke point as well. So was there, is it financial? Is it, w- w- why is that not being addressed?
Yeah, I think subject to operational improvements, those were the two that were identified as the most important that we were willing to add to the scope of the express lane project. Now remember, the express lane project was really just moving, you know, going through that interchange and not really, there's not a connection there, right? So, but we felt like if we didn't solve some of those operational improvement projects, it could jeopardize down the line. Where you do have entrance and exits into the express lanes could affect those operationally. So those two, those two are one project that, uh, corrects those ramp tight, tight, tight curve there on the, on the northwest and the change on the, the, uh, ramp on the, um, east side was the most important and critical for at least adding it to the express lane project. And we pulled it out as an advanced improvement because operationally during, um, construction, main management of traffic is going to be challenging there. So we wanted to get that done and out of the way before the big express lane project. So that was the reason why. Now, I'm not saying that the whole interchange itself doesn't need to be looked at from an operational improvement perspective, but those two were the reasons. Or that was the reason why it was added to the express lane project, uh, in the beginning.
Okay. Yeah. Cause, um, in my experience, east, eastbound is just as bad, if not worse than the westbound, uh, at, at the exit ramp. So hopefully that you guys can, uh, look at that as well. And Jim really hit a lot of the points that I was planning to bring up tonight. Uh, I know I've already talked to you personally about this and anytime I get a, a G dot person in front of me, I take the opportunity to just hammer home how important it is for the PIB access onto the managed lanes. I just think that's a colossal, colossal failure of the first plan. Um, not only do I think it's failing to address a very large problem, I think it'll make the problem worse because of the weaving on and off situation that it'll create to try and get on at the Shallowford access point. So hopefully I'm, I'm both optimistic and, and cautiously uh, concerned about the, the new vendor, uh, developer program because hopefully that might create some opportunity where they may recognize this as a, uh, you know, generator of revenue for them and, and get that part in. Uh, but I'm also concerned and, and I'm, I'm hopeful that G dot has, and I'm sure they do have some sort of safeguards in there that all of these decisions by the developers will not be revenue generated and that important enhancements will not be removed as, as, because they are not deemed to be, uh, profitable enough for them. So hopefully that'll be, uh, monitored closely as well. But, um, yeah, just, I just wanted to take, take the opportunity to hammer home how important that PIB access to the managed lanes will be. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add if I may, just back to the access question, you know, what's out there is what we're planning to do, what we've brought top, brought to the public. The only change that would happen is if the developer comes in and says, here's a value proposition that's good for, for everyone. And we'll assess that value proposition. Like I said, they want to, they want to add more revenue generation for them so they can pay themselves back and make money, right? So if we have fewer access points, that's not good for them. And in particular, if there was one we couldn't afford like Stone Mountain Freeway and potentially PIB. They may see a huge value proposition to build that and go ahead and pay for that into this project. Uh, again, we won't know the answer to that until they come in. And we don't intend to change any access points unless they tell us there's, there's a real good reason why you need to make a change. And we'll have that conversation as that moves forward.
Arty?
Tim, thanks for coming out. Quick question. I'm assuming, but the new express lanes that are planned with, with the new P three approach are they um, Peach Pass or are they going to be one occupancy based?
It's Peach Pass. So you got to pay to get in. The only exception to that is our current policy for express lanes is transit service providers get in for free. And registered van pools get in, uh, for free. Now, the transit piece is, is set. That's going to be a, a policy mandate. Uh, we may have to make adjustments on the other part. We don't know yet. It depends on that value proposition. What are we, what are we trying to achieve? And what is, what can we not achieve based on that proposition? Uh, so we're looking at all those policies right now. Hopefully we can keep everything the same. Certainly transit is, is we're, uh, going to make sure is there for free. But it's Peach Pass, pay to get in. Um, and, and that's going to, that's, and, and the customers, just because, uh, it's a private developer maintaining and operating the system for a fifty-year term, we're going to have policies in place that it makes it look like a sort of operating the facility from a Peach Pass per, perspective. So the customer service side of the house, what they see from a transaction perspective is not going to change. Even if they're, if they're on Northwest Corridor or on two eighty-five or four hundred.
Thank you.
Anybody else before I go? Okay. So I thank you, Tim, for coming out. We really appreciate it. Um, I have a few questions. Um, so one question is, is that previous to the funding change, I guess that's what you call it. The Shambly Dunwoodie Bridge was supposed to be, uh, advanced improvement project like John said. So part of that advanced improvement drop project was also going to be an additional like lane on the entrance ramp. So all that is on hold because you need to roll it into the funding because why?
That project got very complicated once they started the procurement process for, because it was an AIP project.
Right.
Suggested and there's a major utility, uh, line on there. And the notion of being able to, to bring a design build project forward on that and get it done, what we want to get it done presented challenges. So we, we put a hold on that project and said, let's roll it back into the bigger project. That said, there's still maybe an opportunity depending on when the bigger, bigger project comes forth to move that forward if there's time to do so. So we could reassess that decision, uh, at that time.
Right. But from what I heard from your answer to John, you're pretty committed to the one weighing of Savoy and Cotillion, the circular bridge. And probably the bridge has to come down for design reasons and rebuild, right? Engineering.
I, I honestly can't remember if we're underneath or over there.
We're, oh, you're over, the, the bridge is underneath, right? No, the lanes go under. Yeah, sorry. I'm not, you know, I'm not very good at this part.
I mean, the whole reason to put the access point there was because the notion of a BRT station, uh, adjacent to that. If the decision is to make to not put a BRT station there, you know, is there really a need for an access point there? So, you know, and therefore wouldn't be a need to change how that Savoy Cotillion, uh, works. So, you know.
I don't remember that actually being, uh, we'll have to talk, but I don't remember that. Maybe early. I mean, I know that Shambly would like one at Shallowford. Um, and so, but yeah, and, and we don't mind access, we don't mind stations. Not thrilled about a lot of access points. Um, so originally it was one project and then it was divided, stopping at Dunwoodie for the first phase around Dunwoodie to like, because you couldn't, the project was deemed to be too large to go out at one time. Do you recall this?
Well, we split top.
Split it, right, right. Right, east and west. And so are we still looking at two packages?
We're looking at a range of options subject to what the industry can react to.
Okay. And then because that impacts the work the mayors are doing, I know you know that on top in terms of transit and stations and all that. Um, the, the one thing I want to make sure is that we have the access we need in perimeter center. That's really important of everything for us. That's really critical. Um, and I realize the state probably realizes that too, because it houses the most commercial office space in the southeast. And so perimeter center is really important. So one of the projects we have on hold because of this project, the sidewalks on Cotillion, which is the road leading up to, so I presume that just has to stay on hold until we get further along.
Uh, probably.
Okay. Yeah. And then I want to make sure I understood something you said earlier, which is a four hundred project, which was up to Forsyth. Is on hold, but not canceled. Um, uh, to McGinnis Ferry because of issues with procurement, correct-ish?
Well, well, the previous procurement, we went through the process and we had, uh, proposals come in and bids come in. Uh, there were three original proposers. One, uh, refused. They backed out at literally a week before they were due, said they didn't want to participate. Two submitted proposals in a bid. One didn't meet the minimum qualifications. One made it through the process. And ultimately the bid that we received just was, uh, not sustainable from a state budget perspective. So we canceled that procurement and, uh, did not award the project and are going to re-procur, uh, looking at a new strategy on how, what's best suited to move that project forward.
And you don't have a timeline for that yet?
That's a part of the decisions we're trying to make behind the scenes right now.
So that means though, that what you said was, is that this part, so from our residents' perspectives, the uncertainty of this project can be challenging. And it seems to me that the uncertainty is now pushed further back. Like I think the George Shambly Dunwoodie Bridge project was originally supposed to start in twenty-two. If I'm not rem, you know, in the advanced projects, someone correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah. And so we've pushed that off. Is everything pushed off years at this point or we just don't know?
We don't know. I mean, at the end of the day, um, you know, making this change to get what we need for, for the whole, right? And, and to get, get more value with hopefully little to no subsidy from the state. That's, that's really what we're trying to achieve. And also to accommodate the transit service enhancements and, and BRT on the corridor. You know, what we, the reason four hundred is going to move forward first is because it's ready to go, the environmental approved. Top end is in a, a good place because we're not making significant scope changes because it's already two lanes in each direction. So the ability to move that project forward and not have to delay three, four, five years is, is out there. We can move it forward quicker. The east and west is going to take, they're going to get shoved out. I don't know how much because of the added lane and, and added impact. So we're behind the scenes right now, listening to industry, looking at packages, looking at procurement types. There's lots of different ways you can procure this from package perspective. And we're doing that and because we, we want to make a, a good decision now and not make a decision, go to the industry and have the backup as I talked about earlier. So are they going to be delayed some versus the previous schedule? Yes. How much? We're assessing that right now to hopefully minimize that, that delay impact.
And this may not be a fair question, but can you give us an estimate on time? Like when you think you'll have an answer or you can't even do that? Like when you can say with certainty that the bids are going out or procurements? Okay. All right. So, uh, we talked about BRT. The mayors also talk about trails. And we've been working with G dot at least a little bit to make sure that we can have access to space when possible. And perhaps maybe even share some concrete. Uh, will the private developer be given the same kind of instructions that we would have had if it was y'all managing the project?
To the extent possible, yes. I think, and that's why I said at the mayor's meeting, um, on the transit is do keep doing the work you're doing.
Right.
So we can put as much information in front of developer to react to.
Right.
Uh, you know, commissioner said this, we consider these corridors as a multimodal
Right.
Type of facilities, which includes, you know, those types of facilities you're talking about there. And for the ability for us to put that in front of developer to say, we want you to, you know, react to this, tell me what the value proposition is. Can it be done? Hopefully there's an opportunity for it to be done.
We're doing, I think we're, I don't know where we are in the stage. We're doing the design right now, I think. I think, um, we have a lot going on. Um, all right. So I want to thank you for the noise walls going up behind the Georgetown pool. That's much appreciated. And actually exactly when promised, which I bet you don't hear very often. Um, and then, but we, we had somebody from the four hundred project, which name I can't rem, yeah, Marla. Um, speak to us a few weeks ago and we raised what I think is a very important question and didn't get a great answer, which is the signage or lack thereof. And, you know, it's not in Dunwoodie, but I'm certain that we advocated harder than Sandy Springs through Michael and through myself. Um, to get better signage, it is totally confusing for people when they're going, um, up and you have to, first you have to get off way early for Roswell Road. And then you have to, you have three ways to go and it's really confusing for people. Jim's going to.
Throw in a comment real quick. So coming back from Thanksgiving on Saturday, exiting Shambly Dunwoodie eastbound, there is a big line of cars that are exiting, turning left and getting right back on two eighty-five westbound. They have missed the Ashford Dunwoodie exit to get to the mall and are turning around on Shambly Dunwoodie to get back. And this speaks to the signage issue that the mayor is telling you about. Sorry, Lynn.
No, that's fine. I know, but that's a good example. And so these are bazillion dollar project. I won't even use billions. And the fact that Marla said you couldn't do goods better signage until the project is final is inexcusable. And so I'd like to see that fixed, but when it comes to our turn, I expect, we expect better. It is ridiculous for a project that costs billions of dollars just not to have good signage. Plus it's really mucking up traffic. Um, which, you know, in the long run, we're trying to improve traffic and maybe when it's finished, it'll all work out. But at this point, it's not giving anybody confidence. So if we could just work on that and maybe work on, I mean, and not only that, where they painted on, on the road where you get off at Roswell or Buckhead South, the air, it's fading on the ground. So the paint isn't staying. All right. So that's just my comment. And then, um, I think that might've been it. We talked about sidewalks on Cotillion. Yeah. So for us, for the residents of Dunwoodie, because I continue to not sure how this project will benefit us except for BRT, which is in the, in the past, um, being able to put sidewalks where people actually walk, which is Cotillion. So if there's, if there's a point in the design that we're certain things are going to happen and you can call Michael and say, guess what? We don't need all that right away. Oh, the condos. You never got an answer on that either, did you? On the right away for the condos? Yeah. So there's a, also a co, in the current design, there's a condo building, a big, and we were expecting an answer in May twenty twenty? Is that right, Jim? Right. And so I haven't, I don't, I'm guessing you have put everything on hold in terms of right away.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they've held off on that or if they're still, I can follow up and.
Yeah, it would be not that anybody's reached out to us in a while. So, but, but it, you paused it.
We're still buying right away.
You did. You bought those townhomes. You bought the neighborhood. That's gone. The people are out, I think. So. Um, all right. Well, thank you. Anybody have anything else? We appreciate your time, Tim. You give a tremendous amount of time outside of regular office hours to this position and we are grateful. And you will keep us or Michael up to date. Um, will there be new public impact meetings, public?
We're going to have to go back out to the public to let them know what these changes look like and what it means.
And will one of them be here?
Probably.
Okay. If you'll just keep us up to date, please. We'd be glad to host. So thank you. Thank you very much.